If you can stand and say the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. We're going to open our meeting tonight with a public hearing on our Smart Schools Bond Act, which Mrs. Wazinski will present to us.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, thank you, everyone. Tonight's hearing is our public hearing on the Smart Schools Bond Act, and it's an opportunity for us to share our preliminary plans with the public and garner any feedback from the community that might be out there. The plan has also been on our website for 30 days since the board adopted the plan earlier in October, so this is the final step before the committee gets back together to develop our final plan. So this presentation is very similar to the first presentation that we had explaining the process for the smart bonds, but we'll then, at the end, go forward and talk about the specific plans that the committee discussed to spend the money on. So the smart bond was a $2 billion bond authorized by voters of New York State in November of 2014, and the purpose was to help school districts across New York State invest in their schools in four main areas: high-speed internet, upgrade and purchase classroom technology, enhance and construct pre-k classrooms, and install high-tech security systems. Each district across New York State received a specific allocation. Ours was just over $1 million. There's no expiration to this money, and we can put forth multiple plans if that's what we deem appropriate. So there are several steps that every district has to take in order to go through the process of using their smart bonds money. We have to develop the preliminary plan, having a meeting with key stakeholders. The board then approves our preliminary plan. We post it on our website to garner feedback from the community for a minimum of 30 days. We then have a meeting in public. That's where we are now. The committee then gets back together to develop the final plan based on any feedback that we may receive from the community. We present the final plan to the board, and once the board approves that, we then submit to State Ed and move forward with our project or our purchasing. So our key stakeholders who are included in our committee include Board of Education members, administration from each of our buildings, teachers from each of our buildings, three students from our high school are participating, parents from the community, community members, not necessarily parents, representatives from each of the four non-public schools that are located within our district bounds, and our district architects and construction management teams. So, thank you. Mr. Jim Hickey is joining us. He is one of our architects from Young &amp; Right, and he's been working with us and participating on our committee to help develop our plan. So the timeline that we had put forth, we are on track with our timeline. We had our first meeting with the committee on September 25th, and the board approved our preliminary plan on October 1st. The past 30 days, the plan has been posted on our website for the public to view. Today is our public hearing. Tomorrow, we have our second meeting with the committee to discuss any feedback and then develop our final SSIP, Smart Schools Investment Plan. And then on November 19th, we'll present the final plan to the board for adoption, and once that's approved, then we can submit it to SED and start the process. So what is our preliminary SSIP? So our preliminary plan is focusing on safety for our staff and students across our district. So our plan for the use of the majority of the money is to install enhanced security systems for emergency events and communication in both of our elementary schools and in our middle school. This system will allow enhanced features in the event of an emergency and will help communication with all areas of each of our buildings in the event of an emergency or the need to communicate and broadcast inside and outside of the building. Some of the additional enhancements include lights and strobes. So if the kids are in the cafeteria having lunch, it might be very loud. In the gym, there will be not only the announcements that sometimes are difficult to hear, but there will also be lights so that they'll know to be a little quieter and listen to the announcements. Additionally, we have lights on the outside so that if students are out on the playground, out on the fields for phys ed class or recess, they'll also know that there are announcements happening so that they can pay attention to any emergency or instructions that may be given. This is the same system that we've installed in the high school during the current capital project, and the enhancements are almost complete. We'll finish the installation during Phase 3 of our project. Overall, we expect the installation in the three remaining buildings to be about $840,000, which is within our allocation, and will leave a little less than $300,000 left for any future plans that we may have with smart bonds. Does anybody have any questions? All right. If there are any questions, you can reach out to me via email, phone, or mail, and there's also a link to the Smart Bonds page on the State Ed website, which have all of the details, criteria, and regulations for every district across New York State.
Are we fronting the money and then New York State reimburses?
We do have to pay for the funds up to for the expenses upfront. Once the plan is approved, we make the expenditures. In this instance, we'll be paying our contractors, our architects, our construction managers, and then when we have our receipts, we can submit those through the New York State portal and be reimbursed by the state. Originally, when these funds were made available to schools, the reimbursement rate was about two years, so districts had to front the money for quite a long time. That has gotten better. The committees are meeting more frequently, and they're reviewing the reimbursement requests more frequently. So the last I heard, reimbursements take anywhere from three to six months. So our hope is to develop the plan so that our first expenditure goes out the door in October. That's when we have the most cash coming into the district because we have our tax levy coming in, and we have our first state aid payment in September, and that'll give us eight to nine months to get the funds back in the current fiscal year, which will allow us to not need to borrow in order to fund the project and will ensure that we have adequate cash flow to get us through the summer months when our revenue stream is very light. Great question. All right. So the committee will meet tomorrow afternoon, and we'll discuss any feedback that we receive, and we will present a finalized plan to the board for approval at the next meeting in November. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, we will move on to our regular meeting then. We do not have any written communication, but we do have a visitor who signed up to speak, Priscilla Marshall, and I believe Miss Tina Robertson.
Hi. Good evening. On your agenda tonight, one of the things you're going to vote on is the acceptance of a gift from the class of 1969. So this past September, after your planning, it's hard to believe, but Tina and I co-chaired our 50th reunion, and I know many of you in the room, and I've been involved with the Amherst Alumni Foundation since 1999, when my son came to the high school, and it seemed like the perfect time to get re-involved with Amherst, and this was a great vehicle. But all through the years, our classes had reunions every five years, starting at our 20th and culminating this past September at the big 50th. We had the usual tour of the high school led by Greg Pidgen and myself, and people were amazed. We were very lucky to get around and see the whole new music ring that was recently renovated, and just a really feel-good feeling about the whole thing. And it's always one of the things I love to do in the summers is give tours to the high school classes that come back for their reunion, so extra special to give it to my own class. So we went from the tour to one of the favorite establishments right down on Main Street in Snyder for a little evening that night, and on Saturday, Juliana Fedler Voight gave us a tour of Snyder. And Saturday was our big event. We had a very nice buffet dinner at Buffalo Yacht Club, and Sunday, a few folks came down to River Works so they could really see the whole city and really the excitement about what's happening. We had a lot of folks that hadn't been back in 50 years, and we have locals, of course, and it's very similar to most people's reunions, you know? But for us, Tina and I have raised our children here in the district, so we've been basically longtime residents and have had the pleasure of having our kids go through. So beyond just having a party and just to kind of commemorate the fact that unfortunately we have 38 classmates that couldn't be with us this time around, you know, it's hard to look at the pictures from the high school yearbook and see them and see not only the age, but, you know, that we've lost classmates along the way, too. We keep coming up with the idea that we wanted to do something to give back, and it's really hard to start a giving campaign when you don't have a gift, you don't know what you're going to give, but you just want to ask for money. So every time we did an ask, whether it was an email or one paper mailing, we just said, "Please send us a donation if you can for a class gift." And nobody ever said, like, "What do you got, and what are you doing with it?" They just sent money, and I think the average gift was probably $25, but we had quite a few classmates that were very generous and gave us several hundred dollars. So by the time we knew that we had something that was a bit substantial, we were able to get together with Greg and with Jeff Wheaton this summer, and they had some kind of smaller projects, and the question was always, like, "How much do you have?", and we didn't know what we had, but they thankfully had some things that weren't multiple million dollars, so we knew we didn't have that. So we narrowed it down to a couple of things, and one of those in particular spoke to Tina and I on a multitude of levels, and I'm just going to have her talk to you about what it was, how we decided, and what it was that we gave.
As Ellen said, we had our classmates learned about the capital improvement project, and they learned that it was overwhelmingly supported, but yet we still had a few things that needed to be finished up, and maybe we could step in and help. So Greg and Jeff gave us some great ideas, and we could help to finish up another part of Phase 1 of the Amherst High School project out on your new stadium tennis court turf fields. This picture board that Ellen has, that we've had, that Jeff had made for us, will show you that this Amherst Tigers windscreen covers five courts of fencing, and it will be there to support the Amherst Tiger athletes. It will be visible from the turf fields, from probably Westmoreland, and it will bring a sense of pride, not just to the athletes that are presently competing on your fields, but also to the Class of 69, that we're very active participants in the sports programs at Amherst. So they promised us that we'd have a little spot over here for Amherst, who we are, but it is, I think that it'll bring a lot of pride to both the school, the community, the athletes, and to our class that we've given back and contributed to a wonderful, wonderful education and programs, both in music, sports, and all the other extracurricular that we all received here at Amherst. So thank you for giving us this opportunity to give back.
That's fantastic. Thank you.
Can I show it to the camera really quick, just a piece, because, you know, you've probably got some people that are out of town.
When is that going to be?
So it'll be installed in the spring, and it's something they can take down each year in the winter, because we thought, is this going to be an item that, you know, in a year, if people come back, they will never see it again. So Jeff said it's got a nice lifespan of 12 to 15 years. We had it ordered for homecoming this year, and it's usually, when things sometimes happen, it didn't come quite right, so they determined that at this point in time that they would put it up in the spring. But we came not so much so that you would say that our class did a nice thing, which I think they did. I'm really proud of our class, but we're just hoping that this works on other classes, too, that there's a little bit more to a reunion than just having a good time. You can do something that really will be memorable and help those students that are here in Amherst.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a number of preorganized board and committee reports, so we can start with Mrs. Goldhahn for the MISBA convention.
Yes, thank you, everyone, for allowing me to go to that convention. It was really wonderful. The main purpose of me going was to vote our, the proposed by law amendments and resolutions. You should have all received an email or a couple changes to some of the resolutions that gets, like, decided right on the floor as you go along. So you should have all received that from MISBA. If you didn't, let me know, I can forward it to you. So it was interesting. Almost everything passed, there were a couple that failed, there was one that was changed. I have some other handouts that if anybody's interested, there's a booklet on legislative priorities. This was the booklet with all the sessions in it. I attended the full-day law conference session, which Deb has created a section on our board documents website that has all the handouts from the law sessions, and there are also, you can go right on the MISBA convention website and see all the materials for all the sessions on there.
There's a link within our page as well for that.
Super. Yep, so that's great. So that's all right there. Tons of great stuff. I attended, you know, all the sessions I could. There were, you know, I wish I could have cloned myself three different times to go to different sessions. It was a great experience. It was a really wonderful convention. I, you know, we definitely should keep attending that. I think, you know, if we ever had the opportunity to have more people attend, to be able to attend more sessions and get more information, I think it would be great. So if anybody is interested in more information on that, just let me know.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Arrington, we had a policy committee?
Yes, yeah, we met. The policy committee met, continued to work through backlog of policies, so we added an additional meeting in the winter, but pretty straightforward. It was a relatively efficient meeting. And interesting, alcohol, tobacco, drug, and other substances, as probably all school districts are, making sure they add specific verbiage for vaping specifically, making it clear that it, that's unacceptable and the consequences. The immunization of students was one. Jeff Wheaton did say that this really takes up a lot of time. There are some religious exemptions, but really the primary reason is basically just tracking down kids because they just haven't gone to the, updated their doctor's appointments when they've gone yet, haven't thought to go, and it's just critical that they're immunized so that they can attend school. So that's just time-consuming, but that policy has been updated also, and we'll just continue on and work through the policies.
Great, thank you. Ms. Bonfatta, you have a safety committee update, please?
That's right. Our meeting was on Tuesday, the 29th. The first part of our meeting went through some updates. We updated on the family support center, which is currently being renovated, some reminders for all of the buildings from action items we had identified last year. We were advised that some administrative team and Mr. Lampado went to an active threat workshop, which was very informative, and they brought back some great information. And we heard from Mrs. Terry from the middle school, and she updated us on the mental health initiatives that are in schools right now. And we heard from the high school about the new PA system, which is something that we also covered just recently with Mrs. Wazinski with the Smart Schools Bond Act, which is very, very helpful in the high school right now. The second part of our meeting was just some discussion topics, and we did go through, no longer under our umbrella of the safety committee is the Smart Schools Bond Act monies. That's actually, obviously, a separate committee, so no need to update you on that, but we received an update in our committee about that. And we went through, we broke up into separate buildings, and we talked about some areas of improvement, and we wanted to discuss some action items for our safety committees in the separate buildings, and that went very well, and we will be meeting again in the spring.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Ernst, technology?
Yes, we had our technology committee meeting. It was a long day. The meetings start early in the morning and they go until late afternoon. The first half was spent discussing the goals at each of the elementary and secondary levels using the Triple E framework, and then the second half was spent reading through the new science, computer science and digital fluency standards. They're very rough at this point, and it was a long and hard-worth process to even figure out what they were trying to say. They were clearly written by techies and needed some teacher input, so it was fortunate that Mrs. Shanahan had those caught off the presses, and we were able to dig through them and give them our two cents worth, because there's an open comment for five weeks, and we certainly had a lot of comments.
Great, thank you. I'll add one extra thing. Just an event that both myself and Mr. Penella attended, which is since our last meeting, which was the Distinguished Alumni and Educator Awards banquet that the alumni held over at Jazz Boleen. There were some former students and former educators, administrators that were honored at the event. It was very nicely attended, a very nice event, and a nice venue in our own district. And that is it. I'll turn it over to you, to the super professor.
Thank you. Pleased to welcome Mr. Pidgen from our high school and the Pathfinders Task Force to recognize our student of the month from September and October.
Thank you very much. It's always a pleasure this time of year to begin the process of our student of the month and our teacher of the month at Amherst Central High School, the exciting and evolving Amherst Central High School, I will add. But one thing that doesn't change about Amherst High School is the wonderful students that we have in it, as well as the wonderfully dedicated staff that really brings great education to our children on a daily basis. Got some of our pathfinders with us, Bella Kimble and Eliza Shook, that will introduce our September and October student and teachers of the month. Bella, take it away.
I have the September. Mallory Grubb was nominated as student of the month by the Pathfinders, Mr. Joe Thielman, Mr. Jeffrey Wheaton, Mr. Paul Hare, and Mr. Paul Spielberger. Mr. Thielman states that Mallory is a star in the classroom as well as on the field, she does track and soccer. She works hard and seeks out feedback from her teachers to improve, and she has a great attitude always. Mallory is one of the friendliest and most polite students he has ever had. She is such an easy kid to root for. Mr. Wheaton states that Mallory Grubb is a model student athlete. This fall, she is participating in two sports as a dual sport athlete. A first-timer on the varsity cross-country team, Mallory has won two consecutive cross-country invitationals at East Aurora and McQuade, which is in Rochester, with times of 1815 and 1804, respectively. She was nominated for the September 23rd Buffalo News Prep Top Girls Athlete of the Week. On the soccer field, Mallory has helped the Tigers to their current 6-2 record and earned Player of the Game status on 9-9 with her stellar performance against a tough East Aurora team. Mallory is a true leader and is the definition of the term student athlete. Mr. Hare stated that Mallory is such a hard worker in class. She's polite, kind, helps others, and always tries her best. She's a model student in and out of the classroom. Mr. Spielberger states that Mallory is an excellent student in the AP European History and brings a positive approach to every class. Her free-form contributions to class shows her dedication with both academics and athletics. Congratulations, Mallory, for being chosen as September Student of the Month.
And Mallory wasn't able to make it. She's in the second phase of her playoffs. She was in soccer playoffs, and then she'll continue to compete in her track and field playoffs.
Alex Kleeb was nominated as student of the month by Miss Stephanie Redden. He was recently honored as a national merits semifinalist, top 30 in Western New York on PSAT scores. Mrs. Redden states that Alex is a model student who has been nationally recognized for his academic strength. He works well with other students and is always attentive in class. He shows an interest in the calculus concepts that we have been covering, and I can tell that he takes pride in his work. Overall, Alex is an absolute pleasure to have in class and is an excellent candidate for student of the month. Congratulations, Alex, for being chosen as one of September's Students of the Month.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Ms. Kristi Grossman was nominated as the Teacher of the Month by the Pathfinders and Miss Sidebottom. Miss Sidebottom states that, says that Ms. Grossman is such an invaluable asset to the Amherst High School. She truly feels so fortunate that she is able to work alongside Ms. Grossman in the Physical Education Department. She is so incredibly creative in her lesson designs, and she is a tremendous person to brainstorm with. She makes my lessons better because she is a wealth of creative ideas on how to approach our curriculum. She's extremely organized and also brings a great element of laughs and humor to the office, whether it be filled with our high school girls chatting with us or in a mutual planning on time. Miss Sidebottom looks forward to each work week because she's able to work with her. It had been, it had been quite a few years before we had another female in our high school health and PE department, and Miss Sidebottom couldn't have hoped for someone more perfect to share the female aspects of high school health and physical education. She decided, she dedicated a lot of her work and energy to making this district better. Her involvement in the Varsity Council allows her to spread her positive energy to making our students and our school, her alma mater, a brighter place to be. She has such a big heart and really is invested in continuously trying to make anything better or more efficient. Our students love being in her classes, asking for her advice, sharing personal triumphs, venting on a tough day, and just simply stopping into our office to say hello and begin her welcoming office atmosphere. We have circa 90 peps and chairs and even a stiletto heel that is always occupied by our female students before and after PE classes. Ms. Grossman is a breath of fresh air on a bright and sunny day. Her energy is contagious with our students and the members in our department. We are very lucky to have her as such an important role in our high school. Congratulations, Ms. Grossman. Okay, so for the, October. Jackie Hua was nominated as a student of the month by the Pathfinders with feedback from the following teachers: Mr. Paul Spielberger, Mr. Dave Manzel, Mr. Ed Berger, Ms. Allison Boyer-Strang, and Ms. Christina Evans and Ms. Pamela Fordham. Mr. Spielberger states that Jackie is an invaluable member of his AP European History class. His answers are always precise, and his quest to improve himself is admirable. Jackie is a very hard worker, and the results are paying off. Mr. Manzel states that Jackie is calm, cool, collected, smooth, sharp, and savvy. Jackie is a true asset in class. Mr. Berger states that Jackie is a very hard worker. He currently has one of the highest averages in Algebra II honors. He has a great work ethic and always tries his best. He's a model student. Ms. Boyer-Strang states that Jackie is a very creative student who always submits very original stories and projects for class. He also recently competed in the New York State Junior Classical League Fall Festival and won first place for his performance on the individual derivative exam. Jackie also competed on a Latin II team, who received fourth place in the team cert eminent competition. Ms. Evans states that Jackie is a very kind, positive, friendly student who gets along great with his peers, is conscientious in class, and has a terrific attitude. He also shares the same birthday as me. Ms. Fordham states that Jackie is one of the hardest-working students she has encountered. Whether he is inquiring about SAT questions or preparing for a test, she looks forward to giving him feedback. Congratulations, Jackie, for being chosen as one of our children's students. Helena Zomsky was nominated as student of the month by the Pathfinders with input by the following teachers: Ms. Allison Boyer-Strang, Mr. Mark Jones, Ms. Amy Sorrentino, and Mr. Justin Pommelards. Ms. Boyer-Strang states that Helena is an incredibly hard-working student. She also, she is also a very talented artist, drawing the final design for Latin Club t-shirts. She always offers to help when needed and participates in activities above and beyond the scope of classroom work. Helena recently competed in the New York State Junior Classical League Fall Festival and won a third-place award for her performance on the individual derivative exam. Mr. Jones states that he's very happy to endorse Helena as student of the month. Helena's quiet diligence and focus makes her a model student and a genuine contributor to the classroom discussions. Helena is thoughtful and composed in her daily actions with both peers and teachers. She is quick to flash a smile and always considerate and is always a considerate and contemplative listener. Finally, Helena's love of reading is visible on a daily basis. She can often be found reading and annotating various texts, both inside and outside of the classroom. Ms. Sorrentino states that Helena is a model student. She works incredibly hard to earn her grades, studying hard for tests and working diligently on homework assignments. Helena is also an active Red Cross Club member. For our recent drive, she was a top-load donor recruiter. Helena works hard at everything she does, and I'm so happy to have her as a student. Helena works hard at everything she does, and I'm so happy to have her as a student. Mr. Pommelard states that Helena has truly committed herself in the vocal music program. She has persistently taken every audition available to her, including NISMIA as well as building-based organizations. She is a member of Sweet Sixteens, Operetta, and the Concert Corral, and outside of school is involved with the Buffalo Girl Choir. Even when things do not go her way, Helena never gives up. Her dedication and persistence are model traits for her peers that all too often complacently expect things to go their way. Congratulations, Helena, on being October 2019's Amherst Central Schools Student of the Month. Ms. Allison Boyer-Strang was nominated as Teacher of the Month by the Pathfinders, Ms. Anne Schelkoff and Mr. Christopher Banis. Ms. Schelkoff states that she has had the pleasure of working closely with Ms. Boyer over the past four years. They have built a reading program at the high school together, and Ms. Boyer-Strang has also worked extremely hard on building a thriving Latin program as well. She brings her love of the Latin language into her classroom. Her students rave about her as a teacher and outside of teaching. She is involved in running the Latin Club, Dungeons and Dragons Club, and is a class advisor. Her Latin Club just secured a victory in their most recent competition. Mr. Banis states woo-hoo that Ms. Boyer-Strang was nominated as Teacher of the Month. Besides being an amazing teacher in the classroom, she is here after school until 4:30 twice a week so that her Latin Club kids and Dungeons and Dragons kids can meet and enjoy themselves. She started Dungeons and Dragons Club after realizing that there were a bunch of kids over 30 who wanted a club but didn't have one. She also went to cert and with her Latin students this past weekend out in Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh, New York. Congratulations on being chosen as October's Student of the Month. Or Teacher, no. So for Akash, from Edward Bauer, Akash is outstanding in lab. From Allison Boyer, Akash Jacobus is a very thoughtful student who is always asking high-level questions in class. He also recently competed in the New York State Junior Classical League Fall Festival and won first place for his performance on the individual derivative exam. Akash also competed on the Latin II team, who received fourth place in the team cert and competition. From Pam Fordham, Akash is at the top of the list when it comes to intelligent and thoughtful students. I always excitedly anticipate his class participation because I know he will offer something that makes everyone think about the literature a little more deeply. He is a pleasure to have in class. From Justin Pommelards, Akash has found his way to the Amherst Concert Corral and Varsity Singers through hard work and dedication. A relative newcomer to singing, he took the opportunity to perform his first NISMIA solo last year and grew exponentially in his confidence in vocal leadership. That's it.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Lots of accomplishments to hear about.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the things that always stands out when we have the pleasure of recognizing our students and teachers is how well-rounded they are. So not only are they performing in the classroom, but on the playing fields and on stage, and it's amazing. Bella, before you scoot out of here, I'd also like to recognize Bella as one of our Pathfinders, but also for coordinating this spectacular event to benefit the Kevin Guesthouse. So while she wasn't officially a Student of the Month for October, your effort is very much appreciated and very well-respected, so great job.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. The next piece that we have for the Superintendent's Report is a report on our fund balance and reserves long-range playoff.
This is a really exciting presentation.
Most of them yes, but there are some that don't need two reads. Most of them do need two reads. There are rare sections.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, so tonight is Step One, Budget Development for the school year, and our first task is to review a draft form of our long-range reserve plan. It's the same format that we've been using. It encompasses the creation, purpose, funding methods, usage, monitoring, funding level, and current balances of all of our reserves and fund balances. We update this after our audit is complete from the prior year, and this helps guide our decisions on where we want things to land in future years and what our long-range goals are for our reserves. So the first one that we will talk about is our Reserve for Retirement Contributions. This reserve the district has had for almost 10 years now. It's funded through excess funds at that year-end, and the purpose is to pay for expenses to the New York State Employees Retirement System, or ERS. So our goal for this, our funding level goal for this reserve is about two years' worth of our retirement payments, and annually, right now, we're about $75,000. So two years' worth is about $1.5 million. Currently, the reserve has just over $1.2 million. So if we were to fully fund this reserve, we would need an increase of just over $300,000. The next reserve is our Retirement Contribution Reserve and Sub-Fund, and this is our TRS Reserve. Previously, we were only allowed to have a reserve for ERS contributions, and last year, that was one of the changes that was adopted. Thank you to the Board for authorizing the creation of this reserve this past April. And at year-end, we were able to fund this reserve to the full maximum for the first year, which was $476,000. So this reserve can be funded annually with 2% of the prior year's salary, and every year that can increase another 2%, up to a maximum of 10. So it would take us a full five years to get to that if it was fully funded every year. So we did fully fund it this past year. If we were to fund it again, we would fully, we would need another $484,000, which would be a maximum for year-end this year of $960,000. Our Employee Benefit Accrued Liability Reserve, again, has been in the district for about 10 years, and the purpose of this reserve is to pay for accumulated leave that we're contractually obligated to provide in the event that an employee leaves. So this reserve is calculated through our compensated absences. That's one of the figures that we are required to calculate annually as part of our external audit, and that would be if everyone in the district got paid every sick day or vacation day and personal day that was owed, it would be almost $2.5 million. So the recommendation is to have the reserve fully funded for the liability that you have on the books. No, we don't anticipate that in any one year we would need to spend $2.5 million, but it is a liability that we're required to report to our community as part of our external audit. So currently, our reserve has $1.3 million in it. To be fully funded, it would need an increase of $1.12, $1.6 million. Our Unemployment Insurance Reserve is used for our unemployment claims. We do not have unemployment insurance. We actually pay claims. We do have a third party that helps us monitor that. So our claims have been decreasing significantly over the years, which is wonderful. Our current goal for funding level is 10 years' worth of unemployment billings. So every year, we calculate that based on the last 10 years of expenditures. So currently, the last 10 years, we've spent $260,000. We actually have $457,000 in the reserve. So this would be an area that at some point, if the Board wanted to reduce that fund and move it into a different reserve, this would be an area that we could look at to do that. The Tax Cert Reserve is used for judgments that may be against the district or assessment claims that are filed through the town but affect our tax levy as assessments change. Funds in this reserve can stay in there for four fiscal years. So every year, we maintain the analysis of what litigation is outstanding in our Article Sevens. Currently, we have about $520,000 of possible assessment claims against us. Our reserve is funded at $485,000. The $521,000 calculated liability would be if every claim against us went 100% in the claimant's favor, which we wouldn't anticipate to happen. But again, similar to our compensated absence, that's a liability that we're required to disclose, and that is our true liability as of the end of September. If we wanted to have that fully funded, we would need a small increase of $36,000. Our Capital Reserve was established in 2017. It's a 10-year reserve for $500,000. It can only be used towards offsetting the local share of a capital project in the future. We were able to add $300,000 to this reserve at year-end with surplus funds. If this was fully funded, we would need another $200,000 in that reserve. Once the $500,000 limit is reached through this reserve, we cannot put any more money into it. Even if we use some of it for another project, once 500 goes in, we can't ever put more in after that. If you wanted to establish higher levels for a capital reserve, we would need to go to the voters and ask them to establish a new reserve with a new term and a new limit. So those are our reserves. It's about $4.2 million or so. In addition to that, we have our fund balances: unassigned fund balance, assigned fund balance, and our debt service. So our unassigned fund balance is what people typically call your 4% fund balance. Those are the amounts of funds that you're allowed to maintain as per SED and the controller without having a specific purpose assigned to them, and it's 4% of the current year budget. So we are at 3.96, or about 4%, which is just under $2.4 million. For next year, for recommendation, we want to stay there. You have to make some assumptions in order to calculate that because it's 4% of next year's budget, which we don't know yet. So in order to come up with a recommendation, which is an estimate, I used a 3% increase for next year's adopted budget, which would yield $2.47 million as a 4%, which would be an increase of about $100,000. Our assigned fund balance, our funds that we assign to balance our budget. It's either unassigned fund balance that we use to balance, or it's funds that were on a PO in the current year that, for some reason, we didn't make the payments yet and were able to roll those funds into next year. So our assigned fund balance, again, is about $1.14 million. 200 of that, 200,000 of that are POs and prepayments that we made last year. So we do anticipate using those funds during the current year because they were purchases that were on POs that we just had to cut the checks for at year-end. And finally, we have our debt service fund, and this is a fund that is used specifically for proceeds from bond sales. So if we sell a bond or a band and we receive premiums, we can put those funds in this V Fund, our debt service fund, and we use those dollars to offset future debt payments. So it helps our general fund and it helps us in our budgeting because as a debt payment comes on the books, we don't need to increase general fund expenditures the full amount because we can offset those payments with some of the money in this fund. We have three years from the time we receive our debt service money to expend it on debt Overall, altogether, our reserves and our unappropriated and appropriated fund balance give us a $7.8 million total, and the Board has established a goal, a long-range goal of about $8 million. So we were able to see an increase in this year, getting closer to that goal, but we still have a little more to go to get there, but it was great progress this year.
I have a question for you. So our unemployment reserve seems to be high, and the recommendation is to move money. Is there an area where you'd be recommending that we move the money to?
We would want to make sure that we confirmed that decision with legal, that we're moving it into an appropriate reserve, but it really would be any area that the Board is determining that they would want to use those funds. So for example, if it's important to us to fully fund our capital reserve because we know we're going to go out for another project in a year or two years, we'd want to move that money into there. If we were anticipating TRS to increase 3%, and we knew that was going to be a large hit to our budget, we might want to put the money in there to help offset. So there are several different areas that we can consider, but this is what kind of prompts some of those conversations.
Yeah, the TRS Board recently met, and the rate for this year is 8.86, but they said to anticipate for next year, it should be anywhere between 9.25 and 10.25, which we expected because of the five-year rolling average, a year of 18-plus percent earnings is dropping off, and we're adding a year of 7% earnings. So they are saying right now, expect to be nine and a quarter, between nine and a quarter and 10 and a quarter, so an increase of potentially a percent or more.
And 1% of an increase is about $240,000 in our budget, based on current year salaries.
And it would not become an exclusion in the tax gap formula until we hit 2% of an increase.
So this is in draft form because it's an opportunity for us to have discussions. If there are no changes that the Board wants to see right now, we will present it to you at the next meeting for adoption, and then this can help guide our decisions through budget development and as we approach year-end on where we might want to move funds or what funds we may want to use to support our budget as we prepare for next year. This is a live document and can be edited and adjusted throughout the year as needed.
Great. Thank you. Okay. We will move on to new business. We will need a motion for new business items.
We'll make a motion for new business items, F1A through O, 2A through D.
Give me a second. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor of approving new business items, F1A through O and 2A through D, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries 7-0. I'd like to welcome Ms. Kimberly Murphy to the team. Congratulations, and we look forward to working with you. Also, we did approve three 10-year appointments tonight, and congratulations to those people for all their hard work for us. Mrs. Bezinski, do we have any follow-up action items?
I have two.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just to double-check the first read versus approving policies, and then also double-check page three of our reserve plan as it's in draft form before we approve it. The...